Okay, Kimberly, you can go ahead.
Okay, well, thanks everyone for your patience tonight. This is the Goss Town Planning Board meeting on Thursday, June 10, 2021. We are meeting remotely, as everyone can see or hear. I have to read the following in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 202004. The Planning Board will utilize the emergency meeting provisions of RSA 91A to conduct meetings through electronic means while preserving, to the extent feasible, the public's right to notice of such meetings and ability to observe and listen contemporaneously. On the evening of the meeting, which is now, you can listen contemporaneously on the phone by calling 603-766-JOIN, which is also 766-5646. Once you call in, you will enter the participant code 785645-POUND. Please remember to enter the pound sign after the numbers. If you're having difficulty calling into the number to participate, please call 603-488-6783 for assistance. There we go. Okay, we are going to start off by having a roll call list. I will go around the room, since everybody is shifting picture-wise. So I'm Kimberly Pease. I am the Chair, the Vice Chair, but I am the Chair tonight. And I am on my own. We all also have to make a note about we have other people in the room with us. So next up, Mark Lemay.
I am here, present, and I am by myself.
Thank you. Gail LeBrecq.
Gail LeBrecq, Alternate and Recording Secretary, and I am in the room alone.
Thank you. Dave Pierce.
Dave Pierce, I'm alone.
Thank you. Jim Raymond.
This is Jim Raymond, Planning Board Member. I am not here alone. My wife is cleaning the strawberries that she picked today that I'm looking forward to eating once the meeting is over. And I'm not going to have her stop.
Excellent. Barbara Griffin.
Good evening, Barbara Griffin. I'm home. My husband is home. The dog is here. I don't expect any of them to be close by or interested in what is going on.
Thank you. And we have staff, Joanne Duffy.
Joanne Duffy, Planning and Economic Development Director. I am here in the room alone.
Sorry, I interrupted you. We also have Sarah Weirde.
Sarah Weirde, Town Engineer. My mother-in-law, baby, and three dogs are here.
Excellent. Did I miss anyone, other than people who are here to like listen in and participate for the agenda? No? Okay, good. Joanne, help me figure this out. So members of the board tonight are myself, that's one, Barbara, two, Jim, three. Who are my alternates that become voting tonight?
David.
And David, sorry.
Both of them, or do we alternate between them for items?
Well, Phil is not here. Karen is not here. And Tim is not here. So they could fill in for two of those people. And then Mark is filling in for callous as select board member.
Okay. So if we have Gail and Dave vote tonight, I don't have to go through each item and decide who's voting. Everybody will just vote?
No, that's correct.
Perfect. All righty. Okay, so moving on through the, I'm following the Chair's agenda. We have to start with correspondence. Acceptance or Correction of the Planning Board Minutes of May 27, 2021. I have no editor comments. Does anyone have any editor comments to those minutes? Or someone want to make a motion?
This is Chair. I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Jim. Second, anyone?
This is David. I'll second.
Thank you, David. Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Myself, yes. Mark?
I will.
Thank you, Gail.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim Raymond?
Yes.
Barbara?
Upstee.
Thank you. Do we have enough to carry that motion, then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we did. Yeah, thank you. All right, so motion carry. The second item on the agenda is request to the Planning Board to allow for non-material change to increase the entrance to Ernie's excavation site from 22 feet to 30 feet. The property is located at 39 Lower Year Street, MAP 17, Lot 184-1. Joanne, will you give us an introduction to this?
Yes. Or I think either Rob or, I'm not sure who's on there for this.
Earl is with us.
Okay. So I'll just give a brief summary, and then he can explain it further. The proposed change to an existing approved site plan for Ernie's excavation, they were under construction and realized that the 22 feet for the driveway width is not adequate for turning the trucks out of that site in a safe manner. So they would like to come back to the board tonight and ask for an immaterial change that that entrance widens to 30 feet, which would help them maneuver the trucks through the site. But Earl, is that you on there?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything further?
Yeah, I think in conjunction with that, we've also added the sidewalk. And so the geometry has changed a little. But when I first read the Regulation 7-3.4 for driveway widths, or no, actually, it was the number C7, whatever. It says maximum width of the driveway should be 22 feet. I didn't, when I originally did that, didn't read on to where it says industrial and commercial driveways shall be designed for their proposed use. And had I done that, I probably would have given it a second thought about the 22 feet that's the default in the regulation. Especially after adding the sidewalk and the geometry being slightly altered, finding that a truck and trailer that he comes in and out regularly with cannot make the turn. However, if it is 30 feet, he can make that. So it seemed to be just a logical thing to ask for that change to happen. We've painted it in the pavement, and I think DPW is okay. But I think Sarah's on, so I'll let her speak for herself on that. But I think it's just, yeah, we're hoping that it can be looked at as just a minor change to accommodate the fairly tight geometry where the site is.
Thank you. Joanne, I have a question. Is the decision as whether or not this is a non-material change or immaterial change?
Correct, yes. And if it's an immaterial change, whether you agree with it?
Okay, I guess maybe we'll hear from Sarah. Do you have any comments on this?
We watched the site a couple of times with Earl and Ernie, just to go over the ideas. We made a few comments, and they addressed those in the final plan design. So we are happy with their proposal. We think it will function well, and it won't impact the area. I think it's even a reduction from the existing driveway width. So we support that change.
That confused me a little bit. How, if it's going from 22 to 30, you mean a reduction, like an overall pavement on the site, or?
The existing site, what is shown on the plan, what they were going to construct was shown as 22, but what existed before they did the construction at all is wider. So they haven't done the construction to narrow it down, to increase the island sizes, to make it what was shown on the plan. So it's still a reduction from the former existing conditions.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense now. Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone have any comments, or want to make a motion?
This is Chair. I'm going to move one that we find this is a non-material change to the previously approved site plan that does not require public hearing. And we approve the requested change. The question for Joanne and Sarah is, do we have Earl can submit a modified site plan? I think we would, to show what's actually built on the site. So make that a condition, unless for some reason we should not.
We do require an as-built plan at the end of the project, if that would suffice. That's what we normally do.
That's right. It's like we have, what we have in the file shows it's actually constructed.
Okay.
And we did supply a plan showing the change as well, so that's on file.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone want to second?
I'll second it for you.
Thank you. Seconded by Mark. All right, let's go around the room. So Mark Lemay, vote?
Yes, affirmative.
Gail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim Raymond?
Yes.
Barbara Griffin?
Yes.
And I, the Chair, vote yes.
I apologize. My chain of strawberry washer was washing strawberries while I made my motion. It's tough.
So you're all set, Earl? Thanks for coming in tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay. Next item, we have no old business, we're moving on to new business. MAP 30, Lot 44, completeness review, conditional use permit review hearings for a proposal to add a second driveway. A conditional use permit is required if the applicant only has 50 feet of road frontage along East Union Street, where 100 feet of road frontage is required per Section 7.4.2 of the Goss Town zoning ordinance to allow for a second driveway, or a second driveway. A second driveway. The owners are Matthew and Meredith Ackler. The property is located 69 South MAST Street, zoned residential, small business office, one. Joanne, will you introduce the project for us?
Yes. This applicant, as you said, lives on South MAST, but his rear portion of the property is on East Union Street. And he, it's a two-family home, and he currently has a driveway off of South MAST. He would like to extend, have a second driveway coming in off of East Union, which we all agree would be much safer, rather than backing out onto South MAST Road. The fire department was not in favor of this. They stated, well, they didn't say not in favor, but they stated that they did not encourage second driveways when they have tunes of access to one property due to the 911 confusion, or possible 911 confusion. But all of the other comments, the departments either had no comment or they recommended this change, basically for the safety aspect. So he's here for, this applicant is here for a conditional use permit because of the need for a second driveway not having enough frontage to meet the requirement. And he is on the phone. If you would like him to join in, he's listening right now.
Yes.
Hang on, sir. Don't we first have to find the application complete and no regional impact?
Yes, I'm sorry. Jumping the gun.
That's okay. I need to read my, read my agenda.
Do we have, Joanne, tell us if it's complete, and then we can accept it?
Yes. The application is complete.
And I move that we find it's complete and accept it for hearing and find there is no regional impact.
Dave Pierce, I'll second.
Thank you both. Okay, do I run around the room? Mark Lemay?
I'll say in favor.
Gail?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Okay. Now, let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Acker.
Yes, so Matthew Acker. I am the owner of the home, along with my wife, Meredith. Ultimately, you know, we're, you know, we have a large family. The tenants that we have there are also a family. And, you know, we intend to continue to create it and have it be that way. And ultimately, coming in and out on the 114 side is, you know, strenuous and sometimes scary. And we ultimately want to have the best safety in mind with both our tenants and ourselves. That, and, you know, I would speak to, you know, the fact that the, I know that the fire department had brought up the concern of the 911 call. However, there's only one resident at the property, so there would be no address change or anything else in terms of a 911 call. But, you know, that's really what I have to say. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to speak.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
This is Barbara Griffin, I guess. And once again, my screen has changed. And sadly, the only thing I will point out that I can see now on my screen is myself. And I would much rather be seeing you. If somebody could fix this, it would be great. If we're doing this for safety, and this is an issue, I have two questions. One is, how much pavement do we have here compared to the site? I mean, it looks like we're fine for the amount, because it's a big site. But I think that we're adding a lot of pavement to the site. And two, if we're doing this for safety, why wouldn't we be restricting the use of the driveway on 114? I mean, it looks like we're creating, I get the safety issues. Nobody's downplaying the benefit of an access on East Union. But why wouldn't we actually be taking care of the issue on 114, if that's what we want to do?
So I do feel that's a, oh, am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Yep. So no, I do feel that's a viable question, and I do respect that. You know, when it comes to the pavement aspect, at this time, the driveway is actually not a paved driveway whatsoever. So there's no pavement at this time. And ultimately, paving it, I think, would not only increase the, you know, the view of the home itself, but, you know, we are close to downtown, and we want to make sure that we're keeping up with the improvements that downtown is doing and continuing to make Goss Town look great. In addition to that, I do hear your concern of why not just close out the other side. But I do think that it being a two-family home, there is certain opportunities where having the ability to exit at either side is opportune, especially not to mention the fact that, you know, there are, you know, at times four vehicles in the home itself.
Thank you. Sarah, would you like to comment? I see we have comments in our packet from engineering, but do you want to make a comment on it?
DPW is supportive of this, specifically for the possibility of removing some of the traffic off of South MAST. We thought the exiting via East Union would be a safer traffic maneuver. And obviously, this would be followed pretty closely by DPW staff through the driveway permit process. We already have a markup with a lot of comments to make sure that the drainage is flowing towards the grass to infiltrate and not just dumping into the road on East Union. And I don't see any, I know we are requiring a paved, a paved swale. And I think it sounded like the applicant said it will be going from gravel to paved. So it should reduce the amount of sediment that's washed. And we will be following, like I said, we will be following it closely to make sure that it's not just sheet flowing into the road.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Kimberly, I have a question.
Sure.
When the driveway is put in place, how far away down the road is the storm drain located? And I hate to be the complainer, but there are a lot of driveways. They all drain into the street. I really don't see this as a big issue, if there's a storm drain close enough. That's just the way I feel, unfortunately. Maybe we can get an answer?
Since East Union was just done, we do not have updated plans on that, and the plans that were submitted. So I do not have an answer for you. But there, it says maintain shallow paved swale. So I believe in the area that they are proposing to come out on East Union, there's a paved swale along the shoulder. So we ask them to put that back. And I'm sure that leads to a structure. So I believe you are correct that there isn't, it's not a long distance to the nearest structure.
I just, the swale was there. So in all honesty, I believe they have to put the swale back to comply. And that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
There is a paved swale. I'm looking at it on Google Earth.
I'm sorry, Kimberly, I don't have any paperwork tonight. I was the third person in line, so I didn't get, I didn't get any paperwork.
Okay, we should open this to the public. Do we have anyone either on the phone, or, well, we don't have an attendance in the meeting. So is there anyone on the phone from the public who would like to speak to this application? This is MAP 30, Lot 44. 42nd driveway, 69 South MAST Street.
There's only one other person on the phone, and she's here for the next hearing.
Perfect. I guess that we will close the public hearing.
This is Barbara again. I have a question. I think I recall when we approved that to say, this house on this site, how, what size garage is this? I mean, I have a recollection of what I see, but how many, how big a car garage is this?
Is that question for me?
Yeah, Mr. Acker, how big is the garage?
Yep, so there is a two-stall garage that is attached to the home.
Right. As I recall, and it was, I don't, Mr. Acker, I don't recall that you developed this property into a two-family. It was.
No, ma'am, we bought the house a year ago.
Yeah, no. And the people who did it, there was, there had been a single-family home there. They did a very nice job. So, you know, what I'm just looking at, it's more reflection on what the Planning Board did, was that in building the house, which was a two-family, which at the time that we approved with the two-car garage, that maybe we didn't consider that adequately. Because what I think I'm hearing is that with two families in this house, the bottom line is the garage and parking is inadequate, so that the owner-applicant is looking to expand the parking area on the site and go out onto East Union Street in the process. So, you know, I'm sort of kicking myself in regards to the original plan. But I think, you know, just for the boards aware, I think I'm going to come back to, if we're going to provide access to Union Street, I think that the 114 access should, you know, I understand we're not going to, but I think it probably should be closed off. Thank you.
So in looking at the mapping online, it does appear that there's, you know, there's a wide driveway, there's the turn-in to the two garages. There's, I mean, Google figures, three cars. It looks like you're maybe parking on the backside of the lawn. And then, yeah, lots of room in the backside of that lot there. But obviously, that's your lawn, so.
It's a big lot.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Joanne, I guess I have a question. I see, okay. So there was no waivers requested.
No.
DPW had no issue. Fire Department does have an issue with the through driveway for 911. And did say, when the site was built, the developer chose, was directed to choose a street to be connected to, and chose the other opening the year it was built, was 1997.
Right.
And police have no issues. So anyone want to make a motion either way on this?
I think we need to deal with the, did we deal with the conditional use?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're here for, right? So there's a motion to, wouldn't it be approved or denied a conditional use permit?
The applicant just needs to, or the board just needs to review the applicant's answers. They're in the packet, the separate packet where the plan is attached. He did it, but we need to.
Yeah. Sorry, let me get back to that. So you're talking about 15.4.1.4.1?
Yep.
That's exciting. Okay. So the applicant answered the questions required for the conditional use permit as follows. The use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as a conditional use. It would in fact be, need to be authorized as a conditional use. If completed as proposed by the applicant, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of this section and with the specific conditions or standards established in the ordinance. If the project is completed as proposed, it will comply with all the requirements of the section's specific conditions. The use will be compatible with the neighborhood and adjoining or abutting uses in the area for which it is located. The use of this project will in fact be a driveway for exit and re-entry onto the property and will be compatible with adjoining or abutting uses in the area in which it is located. The use will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian safety. The use of this driveway will not have a substantial adverse impact on vehicular use or pedestrian safety. The use will not have a substantive, substance, substantial adverse impact on the appearance and visual quality of the surrounding neighborhood. In evaluating the visual impact, they consider architectural and design elements. The project will not have an adverse impact on the appearance and will improve the visual quality of the property and surrounding neighborhood. The use will be adequately serviced by necessary public utilities, community facilities, and services of sufficient capacity. The project will be adequately served to all utilities and community facilities in sufficient capacity. I don't think there'd actually be any change, so. So those are the answers provided. I guess I would say, I'm not sure that I think it's going to actually improve the visual quality of the property or the surrounding neighborhood, but I don't think it's going to negatively impact it either.
And Madam Chair, Jim, I make a motion that we find that the requirements of the conditional use permit are under Section 15.4.1.4. The ordinance are met, and we grant the conditional use permit as presented.
Okay. Hang on.
Were the conditions that driveway permit required will include the conditions that are in the report on Page 7?
Thank you. For the center-proposed driveway on 50 feet of East Union frontage, shape a shallow paved swale across the apron curve, the detail provided by DPW, and ensure the driveway is graded to the majority of driveway water, sheet flows to the western grassy area and not into the town roof.
Yeah, I would, I would take out the word ensure and just say the driveway must be graded. So I don't think sure adds to that. We make commands, we don't ensure anything.
Okay.
Can we add a condition that the use of the driveway on the East Union side is contingent on compliance with those conditions?
Sure. Do we need to have that compliant with DPW inspection to confirm that this has all been done to requirements?
Yeah, I meant my motion to include that condition, Barbara's condition.
Okay, thank you. So amended.
Gail, did you get all of that?
Yeah, I'm okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion as amended?
Yes, ma'am, I'll second that.
Thank you. Let's go for a vote. Mark Lemay?
Yes.
Gail LeBrecq?
Yes.
Dave Pierce? You're on mute.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Jim Raymond?
Yes.
Barbara Griffin?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm the Chair, vote yes. So motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Acker.
May I ask?
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Can I go ahead and ask a quick question? So with that condition of the use being contingent on, obviously, satisfactory construction, we do a process where they apply for the driveway permit. We acknowledge it. We give it to them. It has all their instructions. Then we sign it when we do the final inspection to close it out. In the event, not saying it will happen in this instance, but in the event they choose not to respond to DPW and fix something if it's needed, would that mean we should recommend that they come back here and the conditional use permit would be revoked? How do we go about stopping them from using it since something would be constructed already?
That is a good question. Joanne?
Well, they would be in violation of the approval. So we may be able to just handle it internally with staff. But if they don't cooperate, then they would have to come back to the board.
Let me just explain. The intent of my motion is, this is a, I'm pretty familiar, we're all pretty familiar with the grading of the site. And as I said, I recalled when this was approved. You know, I have some problems with allowing this, but I get the conditions are met. And the driveway there, as was pointed out, is not paved. This is going to be pretty easy to just start using. And I don't think it's fair for the process, and I don't think the applicant has that intent, without having the work done properly. That's my concern. We've had areas where these second driveways just sort of morph into being. And I just want to make sure, given the applicant has taken the time and the consideration to come forward, and I know it's not his intent, but he's not driving every car, I don't think that it doesn't happen. That's all.
Well, isn't that captured by the driveway permit? Like Sarah, don't you issue a permit? And if it's not done to standard, then you don't issue the permit?
Yes. But, so they submit their permit documentation. We review it and then give it back to them. And then when they call us for a final inspection is when we sign off, like it has been approved. But DPW doesn't really have any teeth when it comes to enforcement. We usually try the best we can to speak with them, explain why they need to change something. And then things kind of fizzled because we don't really have enforcement procedures. So I think sometimes we forward it to Nancy Larson, code enforcement officer, to have her try to escalate it to a violation status. But DPW, to my knowledge, doesn't have like cease and desist authority to say like, "Don't use that driveway." They're not supposed to use it until it's signed off. But looking at the street view, it kind of looks like it's already used as a driveway.
So if this situation were to occur, what would happen, Joanne? They would be issued some sort of notice from the town. They'd have to come back before us?
Right. And then, you know, depending on what you find, there's potential that the conditional use permit could be revoked and they'd have to restore the property. But I've never seen that happen, so I wouldn't worry about it. I think Matthew has good intentions. And I think we have to, you know, the board voted, I think, and we need to let him get on with it.
Oh, I totally agree. I mean, I feel like it says a lot that he was here and getting this conditional use permit. So I think he does have good intentions. Just for every driveway, we don't always have that condition. So I just wanted to make sure I understood if that needed to come back to the board in the event that was a violation.
Okay. Good, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Map line, map nine, lot 941. Complete this review, final subdivision plan review hearing for a proposed two-lot subdivision on East Dunbarton Road and relief from the outer 50 feet of the 100-foot wetland surface water country of the district. Property owners are Henry and Claire Grady, revocable trust, owned agricultural. Joanne, you want to introduce any more of that?
Sure. This land is on East Dunbarton Road, and it was previously subdivided back in 2002. I'm sorry, not subdivided. There was a lot line adjustment plan that came in in 2002 and moved a few of the lots with large parcel. And I think it was 30 some odd acres. And they moved a lot of lot lines to, as a result of a settlement with a trust. And so they're back now, and they would like to subdivide a portion of the land into two lots, creating two buildable, build-in lots. There's, the staff recommends that there's no regional impact and that the application is complete. They did supply us with a wetland functional assessment that was prepared in May of 2021, which points out the impacts to both lots from the Wetland Conservation District. We had several comments on the plan. Sorry, I just lost you here. We had several comments on the plan that we provided to Cynthia Boe there. She would like to just discuss some of the items this evening. And we are recommending that the application be continued to the June 24th meeting because she does need to present to the Conservation Commission on the 23rd. And then we will have some comments from Conservation on this as well.
Ma'am Chair, I move that we find the, I don't think we did this yet. Did we take a motion? No. I move that we find the application was complete, accepted, and find there's no regional impact.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, let's vote on that. Mark Lemay?
Yes, ma'am.
Gail LeBrecq?
Yes.
Dave Pierce?
Yes.
Jim Raymond?
Yes.
Barbara Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Application has been accepted. There, do we need to vote on the waivers first or have a presentation first?
I'd request a presentation first so we can know. Cynthia's very good, I'll let her do it.
Okay. Cynthia, you can introduce your project then. Thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Boe there from Raglan Consultants. Yes, we were at the planning board in 2020. The lot line relocation was the result of a boundary line agreement from all the landowners. We had, we really had, we had some problems with all the deeds. Everything got straightened out by the planning board, so thank you. So it is a, it's an over 10-acre parcel which has steep slopes, wetlands. It is an unusual parcel. So I can, one of the, we asked for a waiver on the topo based on town GPS control point. This has to do with the datum that all of the Grady properties on Grady Hill Road and East Dunbarton Road, that work was started in 2004. All of that data is connected. And so this topo is on the same datum as that. It is an assumed datum. I know the engineering department would like when we give a CD to the town that we, you need it on the data. We can, when we, we've done this before with other towns. We can raise it and move it to be on your datum. It's, there's no really grading involved with this for the purposes of a subdivision. So for your GIS, we can adjust it when we give you the CD. But for the purposes of such a large project, that's why we asked for this waiver. We already had so much survey work in this vicinity. That's the purpose of that waiver. And then the second waiver was for the 80 by 100-foot rectangle for the building box. The regulations state that it's a practicality, practicable, an 80 by 100-foot rectangular area. On lot 94-1-1, we have the 8,000 square foot block. But because of the 25% slope, it's an elongated shape. We would be, we could do more of a rectangle, but that 8,000 square foot rectangle would be going into the relief from the outer 100-foot buffer. So we've asked for relief from the Conservation Commission for any area within that outer 50-foot wetland buffer. But for development purposes, both the 8,000 square feet and the 4,000 square foot septic boxes are outside of that outer 50 feet. So Joanne and Patty Gail and I talked about a lot of this a lot. And I, because of that word in the regulations, practicable, 80 by 100-foot rectangular area, the, it would be best to ask for a waiver. I have seen plans where the 4,000 square foot septic box replied by the state is also sometimes, not in Gofftown, but I have seen them be flexible because of the, you know, it's the nature of the land. It's inherent in the land what we're looking at. So that's the purpose of those two waivers. Do you want me to keep going through other comments? I just want to stop with the waivers.
Go ahead and give us your other comments on it.
Okay, I'm going to go through the staff comments because I know you all have those. The wetlands were flagged by a wetland scientist who prepared the report for the Conservation Commission for relief from the outer 50 feet sensor tape of Meridian Land Services. Comment number two refers to a retaining wall and a two-foot-high metal guardrail. Those are both existing. They're not proposed. So that's an existing retaining wall and an existing guardrail. And number three refers to an existing barbed wire fence. The, I can, we can add to the plan the type of retaining wall as well as when the two-foot-high metal guardrail. I would assume that the two-foot-high metal guardrail probably has been put up by the town. The northerly portion of the site slopes down and the southerly portion slopes up. So the northerly portion has a guardrail and the southerly portion has the barbed wire. From what I understand, the neighbor to the north has had animals and that barbed wire keeps everybody in, out of the road. So that's the purpose of that barbed wire that is shown it being in the right of way. I don't know, you know, if you want to take it down, the client is more than happy to take it down. But that was the purpose of it. I've already gone over comment number four, which is to the waiver that it's the building area for practicable 80 by 100, which I believe gives us flexibility in that shape. Both lots have an odd configuration. And the reason for that odd configuration, again, is because of the restrictions on the parcels that should be 25% slope and the wetland setback. If you, the proposed lot line, meaning two lots, it does take that job. So it's flowing in the land that is under 25%. It's a gradual area. It gives access to both, the southern lot to get up into its property. And that's the purpose of that. The other thing with, in the top of the, on the subdivision topo plan, in the top, there's a box with the lot areas as well as the buildable areas. So the, each lot would be over five acres. But then per the regulations, we also need to have one acre, 43,560 square feet of buildable area. And they both are over 44,000 square feet. So that, the slope and the wetland setback are what's kind of driving that unusual shake. An existing conditions plan has been requested. Certainly can get one to you. The subdivision topo plan pretty much is an existing conditions plan. But we can give you one without the proposed lot line in it. So the subdivision topo plan is the one with the green line on it. I don't know, did you all get a plan with a green? Because there's so many lines on the plan. We highlighted where that buildable area was. And I find that an easy one to look. I have it on behind me, but I don't know if you can really see with the, with the green line. The, let's see. The DPW engineering comments had to do with the, what was the first waiver request. I answered that, and if Sarah has more questions or comments about that, we can discuss. So the road name is on the plan. It's a classified road, variable width. And the pavement width is variable as well. But we will add those to the plan. We can put a temporary benchmark on the plans. I, something we should discuss because for the purposes of what we're doing now, when we bring in the driveway plans and then when the septic plans are done, that's normally when we put the benchmarks on a plan for a, this is truly just a land subdivision. We can add the note about the intent to cut. And we'll add that the wetland setback should be marked by monuments, whatever type the town of Gofftown Conservation Commission requires. Every town seems to have their own, whether they're putting, we put things along trees. However you would like, we can do that. We have a driveway plan and a site distance plan. Those are sheets three and four of a plan set. And the, they were designed, I know your maximum is 10%, and that was what was graded. I explained comment number nine to the client. And, you know, I said, if anything, you need to be under 10%, 9.9%. But it's mostly to get either down into the northerly lot or up into the southerly lot. And we, I, the comment 10 with regards to the length of the driveway, it's shown as being 250 feet. The client, the applicant, has not decided where the house is going to go. He does know that if it's 300 feet or longer, and regardless, there will be some type of turnaround. Like your previous case, nobody wants to be backing into a road. And that driveway is very close to the recent subdivision across the street. I couldn't line the driveway up exactly with that new driveway because of the steep slope. But we're kind of in that same vicinity. And as you can see from sheet four, we have 200, we have the site distance in both directions. The test pit results, they were included with the application. So I can send them to the DPW engineering department, but they were part of the original application. As you can see, there's more than two test pits on that site. So we, those are... so we, those are all part of the original application. We discussed the digital files, when we give you the digital files, they will be on the, the town datum. But the record plan, the record subdivision plan will be the meets and bounds per the boundary line agreement and the lot line relocation. They're all, you know, we all understand reading plans, but a lot of people might not understand that different bearing and distances. So we, we find it best that, okay, these are all coming off of the same datum. The, the, you know, the monuments, certainly intend to set monuments, you know, whatever the town requires. And also that we, once we set them, we submit to you that I signed a stamp that they have been set. So that. So a note where the certified foundation and well location will be required for each new lot. With that, I'm thinking that should be on the subdivision topo plan because, again, that's not really indicative of the land plan. So wherever you might want that. I, I try to keep things that are development on the land plan that is your, you know, it's at the town hall, and that's your requirement, which is great. The fire department comments, any bridging of coverage must support the weight of the Gofftown Fire Department apparatus. The, the town driveway requires a 12-inch HDPE pipe, which these are, and the town standards say a 12 inches minimum for the town driveway standard. And these are, they're both 1.24 and 1.27 feet coverage. So we're, our coverage is greater than what the town standard is, which, which is, that's what you want, it's more, it's structurally more sound. Then the, so the next comment, that would be the subdivision recommendation. So that's from Joanne. So I went over all the staff comments. And I can answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the board have questions for Cynthia?
This is Barbara, I do. Cynthia, can you explain to me again this, the buildable area calculation and which sheet I should really look at to understand what are the contours around that you're figuring it? Because sure, in sheet, you know, sheet two, you've got a lot going on, so I'm not quite sure that I'm following where it's coming from.
And sheet two is the one you want to be looking at. So, so the buildable area per the town regulations are that it's, and it's in section six C under lot, I don't know what page. It's there, and then it's also in your definitions. So it's any, any, any of the area of the parcel except submerged land area, any land within 50 feet of the wetlands, slopes, excluding slopes in excess of 25%, excluding high-tension power lines, and any of the area within a proposed public or private street or right-of-way. So the buildable area on sheet two is the green line. You're muted, Barbara.
All right, I'm back. All right, so you've got the map behind you that I can see, and I know we can't see the green, but if you run your finger, at least that'll give me an idea on my sheet as to where it is, that I'm following the right line.
Okay, I'm going to do it first on lot 94-1, southerly lot. It starts right at the lot line, it comes down, it starts, and then it hits the 25% slope, it comes up and around. And then there's a lick of land where, and we have a test pit right at the end of it that's
Yeah, I see it, okay.
That goes up, and then it goes around and it comes back to the proposed property line, and it follows the property line.
Okay.
That's the buildable area for lot 94-1.
Did you say that it wasn't supposed to include wetlands?
It cannot include wetlands, that's right. There's no wetlands within the green area. But it can include portions of the 50-foot outer septic.
Okay, and then on the lot dash one, where, where my green line?
I'm going to find, following, from the same point, it goes around the the proposed line, and then it comes down, it's following, this is all 25% slope. And then it comes here and it's going to the 50-foot wetland setback line. It's coming down, and then it's coming back down where the 25% slope is on this lot. It's going around, and then it's coming back to the 50-foot setback line. It goes around the 50-foot setback line to the road right-of-way, and then it follows the road right-of-way. So that's the buildable area of the two.
So it goes all the way across along East Dunbarton? Okay, it doesn't jog?
No, not along East Dunbarton, nope.
I have a question.
Yes.
So one of your waiver requests is for, pardon me, will I find it again? For topo based on the town GPS control point?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is that the topo that we're looking at, that you're using to very carefully identify your one-acre buildable area, is not shot on the ground, you're using the town topo?
No, this is, this is field survey topo. But the datum that it's based on is not the town benchmark. So if, because, so we surveyed this, we surveyed all the land up to the north of East Dunbarton, then up Grady Hill Road. We have this whole, and all the data is connected. And it was, when we first started it for the Grady Hill Farm, it was on an assumed datum. And so they're all connected. So, so we use that datum. And, you know, if, if the town topo's here and our topo's here, the relative difference between all the vertical elevations is the same. You know, if there's a five-foot difference between two points down here, it would still be five feet up here. But when we give you this, I understand what the engineer's comments were, we, we can raise our datum to meet yours. For your GIS. Your GIS is, really isn't going to change because this is raw land, it's going to remain raw land until a building permit comes in or someone wants to build a house or a septic system.
Madam, this is Jim. We're not all educated as sit here and surveying. When you're talking about datum, could you define that? I'm sure everybody knows but me, but it'd be helpful if you explained it a little more.
So survey, we have two types of datum, we have vertical and horizontal. And for the, for the town datum, we're, let's say the topo, we're talking, I've used an assumed datum. And for the town, you have control points based on, it would be NGVD, I believe it's 83, 83 or 88, I can't make it those straight. But anyway, so, so that's the difference. And that would be your GPS control, we, you know, if we brought it all in. But we just felt since we, we had just done all these plans two years ago, or even one year ago, we're going to, okay, keep it all on the same.
Excuse me, this is Dave. Let me just try a 30-second explanation here. The contour lines represented on the lot, on the plan are an accurate representation on the shape of the property. And the only difference is the, the actual value of the contour lines represented on the plan. They were, the contour lines, the numbers of the contour values were assumed starting at a 1,000-foot benchmark. When the digital plan is submitted to the town, it will use a correct elevation comparable with the town records. Thank you.
Okay, I think I mostly got it.
Don't give us a quiz, but it's really the measure of the elevation, right?
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the vertical. And then the horizontal is the bearings and distances, the bearing. So the bearings are the same as the subdivision on Grady Hill Road, as the lot line relocation, the boundary line agreement plan. And so all of those plans are on the same bearing system. If you took this plan, if we had put this one on the, the NGS Gofftown datum for horizontal, it would be different than the lot line relocation plan that we did last year, I believe it was 2020. So we want to, we want the plans at the Registry of Deeds to all be on the same bearing system because it has to do with the azimuth, and it's the same thing, and they have still the same relative angles, it's just what was north. The town datum for horizontal is based on true north, more true north. And this is based on a record plan, probably a budding Grady Hill Farm, that is a magnetic. So, but it's still, all the, all the difference between all the angles, north, south, east, and west, is the same.
And the reason why you don't want to convert to using the town's control point is there's not much data to change?
Well, it's, the data, the data changes, but also, it's because you have so many budding pieces that are on that same data.
Okay.
Okay, so, and also vertically, when we give you the data, the digital on this, we will raise it to the correct. But you also, nothing's going to change in the GIS because there's no, it, the data that we, it's all raw, and what the town has is all raw. And this is more accurate than what the town GIS is, but it's the same slopes and everything.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So can it be used for our GIS once, once approved?
We're going to raise it up so it can be used. When you get it on the CD, we're going to, we're going to take it, and we've done it before, we're going to go beep, beep, and you'll, it will. So the CD that you're going to get, we can give you two. We could give you this CD that's on this system. And we can also give you the one for GIS that goes plop, and it goes right into your GIS.
Okay.
Just to clarify, this all sounds perfectly fine to me. I know what Cynthia's saying, and that sounds great.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good.
This is Jim, I'm glad I went to law school and didn't want to be a surveyor.
Good, okay.
Let me tell you, I'm wishing I went to be a surveyor. I was trying to use a compass the other day, and my girl scout days are long lost. I was having a hard time. Oh, oh.
Well, we all like that different things. And I'm like thinking, I'm so glad I'm not an attorney, so I'm good.
All right, well, I feel a little better. All right, I, I have a question that, in regards to the practical shape and size of the 80 by 100 waiver that we're requesting. You don't need it for dash one, actually, what is the one on the right going to be? Dash two, I don't know. You don't need it for one lot, for the one on the right, but you do need it for the one on the left as you look at the map. Is that correct or not?
No, we need it for both, and I think that's in Joanne's comments, it's
Right, okay.
There's one with 1,000 square foot, and the other one is, no, no, no. No, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at your boxes.
In lot 94-1, in lot 94-11 is 16,872 square feet within the outer 50-foot setback.
All right, so would you need this waiver if this was just one lot?
We wouldn't need anything if it was just one lot because we are, it already is one lot. Because of the subdivision.
Right, so the subdivision, and the subdivision was one that we did when?
2020.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Lot 2020. The, Joanne and Patty and I, we really were kind of looking at this. And I think because, I do think because of the wetlands and the slope and the setbacks, it's probably important that the Conservation Commission looks at this. We're not, we're not proposing any development within the 50-foot setback, no disturbance of the wetlands or that, no disturbance of the 25% slope. But, you know, as that sheet two shows you, it's pretty, it's pretty intense. And we, we feel like we do meet all the regulations. But I think if the, I just kind of think if, if we, if we did a subdivision because we meet those portions of the regulations and they start to go out to build, I just think maybe the conservation, somebody driving by the Conservation Commission might be like, wait a minute, we should, we should have looked at this. So we really would like them to look at it just to cross our Ts and dot our Is.
And can you confirm, Cynthia, this is to the south of the prime wetland? This is not the prime wetland system in the upper east corner of the town, correct?
This is not a prime wetland. Not a prime wetland. I think that's like your article nine or something. So, and the drainage that goes through it, you know, it's shown and we, you know, and we have the 50-foot, the 50-foot and the 100-foot setbacks, but it's, it's, and again, nothing, nothing, that's like our test pits are, we don't anticipate any construction going anywhere near those setbacks, so.
Okay.
Most of the time, it's squishy land, it's not, there's nothing flowing.
Yeah, still wetland left. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
This is Jim, what do we act on, if anything, tonight? Do we grant waivers so that when we come in next meeting? Cynthia will know what to do then, and we'll have a final plan to approve? Is that what, is that today's action?
Do we feel like we want to do that? So the continuance is to allow them to meet with the Conservation Commission and do we keep comments from them? So I don't see that their comments would have anything to do with either waiver. So we could, if we, if we wanted to make a decision on the waivers tonight, is there a feeling by the board that we would want to act on the waivers tonight?
Yes, I don't think we should act on the waivers tonight. We haven't done it before. And I, you know, I'll be quite honest, I'm having a major problem with this application because this was a subdivision created in 2020. And I think at the interpretation of the zoning ordinance as to the practical shape and size would be a little more appealing to me for a waiver if it was a lot that had been in existence, not created while this requirement was in existence. So, you know, I, we don't normally deal with the waivers before it goes to conservation. You know, certainly the board can do that if it wants. But, you know, there are, I, I'm starting to hear about this driveway, that they're, they're mapping out at the maximum slope. And we had a driveway on Wallace Road that, you know, frankly, I think I and other people were calling on because the slope on the driveway was unbelievable. This is a lot that the applicant created, and we're going through a lot of gyrations to make this work. And I have to say, the buildable area contour, you know, I appreciate that Cynthia's representing, you know, we're not touching any of all this deep slope and wetlands in regards to the building. But one of the reasons we have this stuff building, but one of the reasons we have this stuff is because we know people use their land. So I would, I would not be inclined to be sending this to the conservation commission with waivers granted.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. I actually agree with everything that you said, and you said it very well. So, Gail, you could just say that Kimberly agreed with that as well. But Cynthia, you wanted to make a comment.
I did want to address one thing. This was not a subdivision in 2020. So this was the plan, we had done a boundary line agreement between three, there were four lots, three, but three owners. So it was a, a boundary line agreement because they all just overlapped themselves. And then when the, when, when the board started, they said, wait a minute. So we came and we did a lot line relocation. So they were existing lots, that the, the owner said, yes, we agree to these lines, but it, I think to clarify it as a subdivision, it was not in 2020. They were existing lots of record that overlapped, truly overlapped each other. One of them overlapped it by four acres. It was, we really cleaned up a big mess. So, so that.
Remember, you did that and it was a mess.
Yeah.
I think you asked the board more than once just to get us to understand what you were doing.
Right. But it wasn't a subdivision, so we weren't, we really weren't free, we, we can go back. We weren't creating any new lots, it wasn't a subdivision, but, but the owners all agreed, which is truly amazing in this day and age. So, so that's that. We can come back with the driveway. I talked to, when I saw Sarah in the comments with regards to the 10%, I talked to the engineer today and we can, you know, when we come back on the 24th, we can make it less than, so we're not, we're not right at the 10%. We can, so on the, the 94-11, the northerly lot, that goes down. So you, so on that lot you're going down, and we could make it not go down so steep. And on this lot, you're coming up to get up into this higher ridge area of the lot, and we can grade it that way. Certainly happy to change it. We don't want to have it, again, I really think those are the best lots for driveways to come into both lots, especially on 94-1, because, you know, the, the further you go south on East Dunbarton Road, you're getting into a steeper slope. So we really have it in the least steep area and we, and it, the driveway also is the minimum distance from that proposed property line for the town's driveway regulation. So, and I've explained all this to the, the client, so. That's not a big deal, this, this slope. We'll, we'll regrade. Would you like us to regrade it? We can do that.
I'm also inclined to, to say that I have doubts about the waiver of the relief of the outer 50 feet, although that's up to the conservation commission. And I think if we were to make a motion on the waiver about the practical size and shape, I mean, the only way you're going to make it work is if you have the relief of the 50 feet and you meet this and you get relief of that practical size and shape of the rectangle. And I, I don't, I don't know, I'd like to hear conservation commission comments on that first. So I'm not inclined to vote on the waivers tonight either. Does anyone else have any? Does that create a major heartburn for anyone else? And I guess my second comment is, knowing that Cynthia has to wait a few weeks before we get conservation, does anyone else have any constructive comments that we could suggest at this time? No? Cricket. Okay, we do have to request input from the public and open it to the public since it was advertised. I believe there is someone that is on the phone, is that correct, Joanne?
Yeah. In the beginning, she said she had no comment, but I, I just unmuted her. Karen, would you like to say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Do we need her name for the record since she said no thank you?
Sure. Karen, C-U-R.
You don't, you don't need, wait, 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 wait. You don't need to put the name of a member of the public in the speech.
Okay, if there's, right, if there's no comment. Okay, thank you. That's what I was asking. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we discussed the project, we've heard from Cynthia, we've asked questions, we got input from the public. Our next step is we're going to continue the application to the June 24th meeting. The public will be allowed to either call into the meeting as previously noticed, or they could attend the meeting. This will be our first meeting in person at the Goshawtown Town Hall, Mildred Stark Room 106, for those of you that forgot, 16 Main Street, Goshawtown, New Hampshire, first meeting where the public can attend in person in quite some time. Do we have to make a motion to continue this?
Yes.
We do, don't we? Yeah, okay. Can someone, oh, hang on. Cynthia, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to check with Sarah if she has any comments from engineering before we get, looking at the driveway or anything else.
No, a majority of my comments, I felt like were more like FYI, maybe, like as long as they're included in the conditions of approval or noted on the plan, they're fine. And you addressed my comment with the waiver. So the driveway was more of just a caution because we didn't want to get to like them trying to get a CO and us have to drop the bad news.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. So someone make a motion to continue the application to June 24th?
I'll move it.
Barbara moves. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Anyone have a comment before we vote? Okay. Mark Lemay?
Yes.
Gail LeBrack?
Yes.
Dave Pierce?
Yes.
Jim Raymond?
Yes.
Barbara Griffin? Yes, no. And I, and I vote yes.
I muted him.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So the continued motion carries. This application will maybe continue to June 24th meeting, and if anyone is listening, this will also be presented at the June 23rd Conservation Commission meeting as well. Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you so much.
I don't see any other business. Joanne, do we have other business?
I just have one other item that I emailed everyone this afternoon. If you remember, we were notified by the town of Dunbarton about a development called Countryside Estates. And the town, many months ago, the town had determined that this subdivision had regional impact. So the board had reviewed it. At that time, it was a 43-lot open space development with tiny lots. And they, they wanted to comment about traffic, but then Dunbarton continued the meeting, I'm sorry, continued the application to another date, so it wasn't heard. So nothing was sent over to them. Well, a few days ago, we received a notice that the plan now has changed. The layout is basically the same. It is no longer an open space subdivision, and they've reduced the number of lots to 20. So their next meeting is on June 16th, and we don't meet again until the 24th. So I didn't know if the board wanted to send over any comments or not. It's on the town line of Goshawtown. That's why they decided to send it as regional impact. So basically now it's a 25-lot conventional subdivision.
I don't have any comments. About the family, as the plan showed that you sent today. I'm sorry, I interrupted. Go ahead, Barbara.
I don't have any comments on it. I would just point out that I think it is a much better use of space than what open space was letting them do. And I say that because of my opinion of what open space projects are turning out to look like. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I can email them and just advise that the board did review, and they felt this was a much better design, and they had no comment, no comment.
I just, I just leave it that we haven't made that finding. I just say we have no comments.
Okay.
This board hasn't voted on this plan, and I don't think it's appropriate.
I didn't, and I didn't mean that to be a comment that's sent. I thought I made it pretty clear that was just my observation for the board to take a look at, not for Dunbarton to consider.
But thank you for, thank them for sending it. It's good to have some cooperation.
I actually like the open space plan better, so I'm on the other side of defense. But, so I guess the answer is we'll nullify each other out and we will send no comments, but thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Everybody, anybody else have any comments, or someone give me a motion to adjourn?
I'll move when we adjourn. Thank Mark for his presence, and thank you, Kimberly, for, once again, doing a good job at the meeting.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jim. I'll second that.
Okay. Let's go around the room and vote. Mark?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Dave?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And me, I vote yes. All right, motion carried. We are adjourned for the night. Thank you, everyone.